What would a high-quality education system look like that responds to the needs of the 21st century? And that agenda really formed the basis for our support of the education quality standards, which you're going to hear a little bit more about tonight. Act 77, which created dual enrollment, early college requirement for every student to have a personal learning plan, and universal pre-K. And our belief was that those policy initiatives held a lot of promise for ensuring every student in our state has access to learning opportunities that responded to their unique learning styles, interests, and aspirations. So, that was great. We embarked on this sort of whirlwind of ambitious legislation getting passed. And then the question becomes, how do you implement? And that really caused us to spend some time reflecting on our current leadership and governance structures in order to understand what barriers might exist to implementation. And it really, those conversations, discussions, analyses, really exposed some opportunities, I think, to improve our systems and the way they operate in order to ensure greater equity of opportunity. So we knew that a lot of places were sort of able to move forward pretty quickly implementing some of these initiatives, and others were really struggling. And so, last year, for those of you who came to our regional meeting in Manchester, how many of you were here last year? That was another packed, packed house that time. So we presented our situational analysis of public education, and then Secretary Holcomb presented her analysis of the state of education in Vermont. And that was really an effort to provide our members with a much clearer picture about the strengths of our system, and we have a lot of strengths, but also what opportunities might exist to improve. And the challenges, I think, that were depicted at those meetings included declining enrollment that we're seeing, we're not seeing it everywhere, but it's certainly a statewide issue, rising costs, growing student needs, so increasing students with poverty and addiction issues, leadership turnover, and growing inequity in student opportunity. And those challenges existed last year, and they continue to exist, and they form the basis for, I think, a lot of what Act 46 is designed to address. And despite these challenges, and despite the work that is going to be required of school boards and school board members and our leaders, I think this is a very exciting time to be leaders in education. Since the passage of Act 46, we've met with school board members from over half of the supervisory unions in the state, and I can say with confidence that school board members are rising to the challenge. They're charting a positive course forward for their own systems, and I believe that course builds upon the strengths that exist in their systems and recognizes that, in some cases, preserving the status quo is not in the best interest of the students or the communities that we serve. So I've been very heartened by the conversations I've had with folks over the last few months. The types of changes and opportunities presented by Act 46 require that the VSBa be prepared to serve our members in a different way and to help them navigate some of the most significant and challenging issues facing public education today. So as executive director, I'm going to work with our members, our board of directors, our tremendous staff, who we've met here tonight with the exception of Carrie and Emily, in order to ensure that we are always staying true to the goals that we set for ourselves when we began having these conversations. What does a great public education system look like? How do we ensure every student has access to that system? And how do we ensure that it happens at a cost that taxpayers can support over time? So I thank you all for being here tonight. I want to thank Secretary Holcomb and Amy Fowler for being here, because I know it's a lot to ask folks to join us for 11 meetings, seven this year, but it's really, I think, a valuable partnership, and I know that you'll appreciate their remarks. So, I'm going to spend about 30 minutes on this presentation, giving you an overview of Act 46. I also want to acknowledge that there's a video camera in the room, and so what we've done is, we had a request for public access to come and film this portion of the night, so these guys, members of the community, are asking about Act 46 and what it means. And so we thought this was a really good opportunity to start to share that message. So, for folks, your fellow board members that weren't able to come here tonight, or members of the community that want more information, you can point them to this resource, which will also be up on our website once we get a copy. So, Act 46, what is it? I think before I get into the mechanics of Act 46 and what the different options are, I want to spend a few minutes talking about the statewide context. I alluded to that just a few minutes ago, but we're really in a state that I'm, you know, I spend a lot of time at national meetings, not a lot of time, thank goodness, some time at national meetings where I hear from colleagues around the state. And public education is really under assault in many states in the country, under a lot of stress. And in Vermont, I feel like we have such a deep commitment to public education, and we also have very high expectations for ourselves. So, the types of policy initiatives I referenced earlier, education quality standards, flexible pathways, personal learning plans, universal pre-K, those are all really bold, ambitious goals, and the question is, how do we deliver on those so that every kid has access to those, those options? We're seeing increasing poverty and addiction rates, these are all statewide factors. So some communities are feeling more of these than others, but I imagine every community is facing one of these issues, at least one. So declining student population, growing inequity in student opportunity and outcomes, so one of the things that has become apparent is that as boards are under more and more pressure to contain costs, they're in the position of having to cut programs, or rather than expanding offerings for students, it's, you know, what program can we cut that's going to do the least amount of damage? And so, when you have some communities that are under intense financial pressure, you'll see their offerings are much more limited than offerings available to a student who happens to live in another town down the road. And that's, in Vermont, we have a commitment to equity, and when that type of disparity starts to become apparent, that's a problem. Significant cost pressures, you are all, I think, acutely aware of those, and high leadership turnover. So we know, we see around 30% a year superintendent's turnover, same is true for principals and board members, we see a really high turnover rate. And when you think about the expectations we've set for ourselves, the challenging context that we're trying to achieve them in, having leaders turnover on a regular basis, makes it really, really difficult to achieve the goals that we've set. So that was the statewide context that our legislators spent many years, really, analyzing, discussing, and developing a policy approach to respond to some of these things. And it's really been an evolution. So, in Act 153 in 2010, there was an effort to address some of these issues by encouraging voluntary mergers and also trying to centralize certain services to achieve scale in the area of transportation, special ed, et cetera. Act 156, two years later, was another iteration of that bill, and now we're at Act 46. So this is not a new set of issues that the legislature has been grappling with. I think it's, the pressures have gotten to a point where they felt Act 46 was the, was the policy lever that needed to happen. Before we talk about Act 46 and structure, which is really a lot of what the meat of the bill is, addresses our structure and our governance, I think it's really important for folks to start thinking about first, what is it that we want to provide to our children? Because that's why you're all school board members, because you care about kids and students and their education, and if you start from that place first of what is it that, what are our goals for our system, what's our vision that we've established for ourselves? Because if you can't design a structure to support that vision, then you shouldn't be designing that structure. So it really ought to come down, all come back to, is this in the best interest of students? It's also really important to stay connected to what your communities value, because at the end of the day, any proposal that goes to a community has to have their support, and community connection with our schools is critical. And so if folks feel like you've designed a new system that disconnects a relationship that they have with their school, that's not going to be a good system. And then, take an honest look at the challenges that you face. So, you know, is there a way, if, once we've looked at an analysis of our data, of our, the opportunities that we want to provide to our kids, and whether or not we're able to provide them to everyone, start asking some questions about what's preventing us from achieving these goals? And what are, I think, we get caught sometimes into, well, we've always done it this way, so we have to keep doing it this way. And are there some assumptions that you can test in order to find a better way to, you know, address the challenges in order to achieve your goals? So I think that, that's how I encourage you to start that thinking when you think about Act 46. Rather than go right to the structure, and we have to do something with 900 students, or, you know, start thinking about what is it that we want for our kids, pre-K through 12, in our communities? What is it that we want? What's important to our communities that we do not lose when we move forward with this? And then, how can we design something that's going to really address the challenges that we currently face, that we talked a lot about last year at our meetings? We talked a lot about the challenges that we're born to facing in terms of containing costs and increasing opportunity. And there were some great ideas that came out. So, the crux of Act 46 is creating pre-K through 12 education systems, and really, the main policy objective here is that on or before July 1 of 2019, educational opportunities are going to be provided through sustainable governance structures that provide pre-K through 12 opportunities at a reasonable cost. It's actually at a cost taxpayers and community members value, is the direct language. So those systems or structures are expected to achieve some outcomes, but first is to provide equity in the quality and variety of educational opportunities, and lead students to meet or exceed the education quality standards. And I think a good chunk of Rebecca and Amy's presentation will help flesh out a little bit about what those two things mean, what they might look like. They're also supposed to maximize operational efficiencies through greater flexibility to manage resources, including sharing staff, and promote transparency and accountability. So this is part of Section 2 of the bill, these are the goals of both the Act and the goals that any new system that's created under the Act are expected to be designed to achieve. The law establishes a preferred governance structure, and that is a single pre-K through 12 district that serves at least 900 students, and has one of the four most common structures. Can any of these, okay. So assumes one of the four most common structures, one is you operate all grades pre-K through 12, you operate pre-K 8 and pay tuition for grades 9 through 12, you operate pre-K through 6 and tuition 7 through 12, or you don't operate any grades and you pay tuition pre-K through 12. Those are the four most common, or obviously, it's not an exhaustive, we have 13 governance structures in Vermont, but these are generally the most common. So it sets up a preferred governance structure and a general timeline, and there are really three paths to implementation that I'm going to talk to you about tonight, three ways to get to 2019. The first path is accelerated transition. So that is that by July 1, 2016, the electorate has to approve a plan to merge all member districts of a supervisory union into a single district. This could also include a merger with a neighboring supervisory district. The new district has to have a minimum ADM of 900, be operational before July 1, 2017, and agree to provide data to the Secretary of Education to evaluate the impact of the merger on quality and cost. So the accelerated mergers were really, it's a very tight timeline. They're really intended to accomplish three things. One is to produce a Vermont-specific research base on the process, design, benefits, and opportunities associated with operating at scale. There's a lot of national research about the benefits, both in terms of opportunity and cost efficiencies, but a lot of those systems are a lot bigger than what we see in Vermont. And so it's difficult to translate directly, and when you have a situation where in 2018 the state is going to be making some decisions, it's really important that we have a Vermont-based body of research around what works, why, so that those decisions made by the state are informed by that research. It's also designed to support supervisory unions that have previously undertaken significant planning activities. So under Act 153, which was the voluntary merger law, there were quite a number of districts that did a study committee, produced a report, either they went to vote and it didn't pass, or they opted not to take the plan to the voters because they didn't feel it was ready, for whatever reason. But there are a lot of districts out there that have done some work, I know that there are districts down here that have done that work. So if you've done a lot of work previously, and you can sort of reboot that initiative, accelerated timeline could work for you. Or you could be a supervisory union that's configured in a way that would lend itself to an expedited merger process, so you don't have a blend of operating and tuitioning districts in the same supervisory union, because that gets more tricky. You can only combine those into a single entity if one agrees to either operate or tuition, so you can't have different structures or different processes within the same district. So there's an incentive package for the accelerated transition. It's a five, the biggest difference, I think, between, the biggest difference, between accelerated and conventional, is it's a five-year tax rate benefit, starting at a 10 cent tax rate reduction on the first year, then down to 8, 6, 4, 2 in the subsequent years. You can realize the full reduction in the first five years, so, or in the first year, really. So, in the conventional process, there's a buff, you can only, your tax rate can only go down 5% or up 5%, but if you pursue an accelerated merger, you can drop the full amount in the first year. And in some places, that makes a significant difference. The small schools grants, that program is being changed significantly in terms of its availability moving forward after 2019, but if you form a new district, that district will keep any small schools grants that are currently received by any of the merging districts. There's a transition facilitation grant of $150,000. The ADM holds harmless protection, which is due to be phased out in fiscal year '21. You can keep that in perpetuity, and you'd be exempt from the requirement to repay state aid if a school building gets sold as a result, or at some, at any point. So that's the accelerated. The second option is a more conventional transition, and this really has two side paths. So the, we worked really hard in the General Assembly to ensure that there was enough flexibility built into this law to respond to the realities out there, which are that it's not going to work in every place to form a single pre-K through 12 district because of historic choice, or tuition, or operating patterns, geography, et cetera. So there may be some places where a single pre-K 12 structure won't work, but where, under Act 156, there are some alternatives that have been approved by the legislature before. The one is a modified, unified, union school district, which is essentially all, or the majority of members of a union high school district vote to form, to merge with the union high school and elementary districts. If not all of the elementary districts agree to form a single district, a new entity can still be formed, and that would be a modified, unified, union school district. That is what Chittenden East did earlier this year. When I'm done, I'm going to show you a quick clip of interviews with some folks from that system, but they had one town vote against the merger, and the remaining towns moved forward and formed a single district. That new district, if somebody else formed a district like that, you'd be eligible to receive incentives, so long as that vote happened before July 1, 2017. There's also an option called referred to as a side-by-side, so if you had a supervisory union that had two or more districts merge that operated pre-K 12, this is by purpose of example, and two or more districts that operated pre-K 6 and tuitioned 7, 12, as long as you had two sides that resulted from the merger of at least two districts, you would qualify for incentives, and there would be so-called protection from the state plan. So those are some variations under Act 156. Act 46 didn't eliminate Act 153 or 156, so those are still good law, makes it a little bit more complicated for people like me to talk you through what it means, but those options are still available, but they're time-limited. If you are in a situation where you can merge into a preferred structure, so a pre-K through 12 system that serves 900 students, you just need a little bit more time to get there, you're not going to get there in a year, as long as you're operational by July 1, 2019, you're eligible for the incentives, and there's no deadline there for a vote of the electorate. The incentives here are very, they're almost identical to the accelerated version, except you have a four-year tax rate reduction starting at 8 cents, and you have, during the first four years, tax rates can't increase or decrease by more than 5% a year. So that's the difference, the rest is the same. So the third path is really for districts that do not take action to voluntarily reorganize themselves and don't plan to do so by July 1 of 2019. So you're required to take certain actions prior to November 30 of 2017. School board has to evaluate the district's ability to meet the goals that I showed earlier, so equity, quality, efficiency, transparency, and accountability. And you have to meet with other boards in the region. Then, once that work is done, you submit a proposal, either as a single district or as a group of districts, to either retain your current governance structure or form a different structure to the Secretary and State Board of Education. And that proposal has to demonstrate how the district will be able to achieve the goals of the Act, and must identify specific actions the district will take to achieve those goals. The Agency of Education is beginning this fall, and this is what Rebecca and Amy are going to talk about in a few minutes. Begin conducting education quality reviews and site visits to evaluate district's ability to meet the education quality standards. The Agency is also tasked with monitoring activity related to governance and keeping the State Board up to date, a prize of progress that's being made statewide. And then in 2018, based on sort of where everybody is, the Secretary is charged, under the law, to develop a statewide plan to transition all districts to sustainable governance The statewide plan will be adopted by the State Board on November 30 of 2018. Implementation of the transition is effective July 1, 2019. The statewide plan will not require districts to lose choice or require districts to pay And under, in the Act, absolute protection from the statewide plan is provided for interstate school districts, regional career tech center school districts, and districts that voluntarily merge into a preferred structure, or a structure eligible to receive the other incentives by July 1, 2019. Somehow, my slides on supervisory union didn't make it. So, if you're going to submit a proposal to retain a supervisory union structure, the law does set some requirements for, or some parameters around supervisory unions, so that the Secretary and State Board have to take into consideration when they're evaluating that proposal. So the supervisory union should serve at least 1,100 students, be committed to operating as a unit, serving the best interest of all students in that supervisory union, and operate, have a plan to operate that way, and have the fewest number of districts practicable. So that's not on this slide, but I will, I can get, I'll have updated slides on our website if you want that information. Okay, so, there are some financial consequences, and I also want to stop here and say that this presentation is not designed to cover the allowable growth rate, which is in, which is a big part of Act 46, there's a lot, there's a lot actually in Act 46 that this presentation does not cover. This is really designed to help you all get really familiar with the governance provisions of the bill. There are some financial consequences built in with respect to governance. So if you don't engage in voluntary structural change, you're not eligible to get incentives. We are, so that's, that's something to keep in mind. If you are, that becomes apparent over the next, you know, I think it will become pretty apparent, that there are certain places that, when a statewide plan is being prepared, unless you can really make a very strong case that you can meet those goals, which are going to be pretty, that the bar is going to be pretty high, and you're configured in a way that's, you know, we have some supervisory unions in the state that are pretty difficult to figure out how they're going to be able to form a single district because of the combination of structures within those supervisory unions. There are others that are relatively straightforward, primarily those that are organized around a union high school district. It's hard to imagine in 2018, the State Board exempting those, the places that are so straightforward from a requirement to merge, to create, to unify into a single system. So, if you're going to end up in a single system, just be aware that there's an opportunity to get some tax incentives, transition aid, et cetera, or you could find yourself not having taken the benefit of that, those resources, and be in a new system anyway. So it's just important, as board members, understanding what path you want to take, that that's a reality. So, again, if you don't do anything after July 1, 2019, you're only going to be able to retain small schools grant if the State Board determines you're geographically isolated or can demonstrate academic excellence and operational efficiency. The State Board is going to publish guidelines about that in 2018. They could do it sooner, but the law requires them to do it in 2018. ADM holds harmless protection goes away, so for those So for those of you who have tax rates that are lower than they otherwise would be because your pupil count has not gone down as quickly as it would have, they're also known as phantom students. If you have a significant number of phantom students, that protection is changing a little bit over the next two years, but it goes away entirely. And effective July 1, 2017, supervisory unions that are out of compliance with Act 153 centralization provisions on transportation, special ed, et cetera, will see a 5% tax penalty. So, you know, Act 46 is really a blend of incentives and disincentives to act. There are staggering timelines to reflect the fact that not everybody can, can or should move at the same pace. There are different paths available, you know, recognizing the fact that one size does not fit all in Vermont. And at the end of the day, it really, I want to just come back to, the conversation really ought to be grounded in, what is it that we want for our children? Are there ways that we can be doing that better? And how are we going to leverage what's in this bill to help get us there? So I think, I will take a few questions, if you have them, about, I don't understand what you said about this. Not, what should I do, or how does this play out in my community? As I said, I'm going to try to address some of those in the small group discussion, but I don't want you to sit through the rest of the night thinking, that did not make sense to me. So you had your hand up for it, Tim.
Well, Lord, it's clear.
I am.
Fifteen years ago or so, the sole equity in education in Vermont was based upon, was based upon the Fourteenth Amendment.
On the Vermont Constitution, so the Brigham Decision?
Yeah. Which part of the Vermont Constitution?
Article 1, section, I don't know off the top of my head. What's the Vermont Constitution?
So it was equal protection.
It is an equal protection issue. Fourteenth Amendment is in the United States Constitution, but many states have equal protection. It was actually the common benefits clause of the Vermont Constitution that was fundamental to that case. But it's a constant, in Vermont, we have a fundamental right to education, and it has to be equally available to all children.
The biggest feedback I get from people in casual conversation is, you know, equal education is fine, but has to be equal taxation also. So all these penalties and bonuses, okay, the tax payers and people of Vermont aren't being equally protected under this Act, Act 146?
Forty-six.
In Act 46. So we're talking about equal education, but disparity, disparity. And if anybody gets penalized, the City of Cleveland Union has volunteered to defend us against the state of Vermont with its penalties.
Yes, so the ACLU I know is definitely engaged in conversations about the allowable growth rate and concerns that they have about that.
And this disparity in taxation, we're talking equality, everyone should pay an equal rate.
So we are a statewide system. We have a statewide education tax that does, that varies depending on local decisions. So the local budget that you pass, and the number of students that you have, and your grant list, all go into your local tax rate. But we start from the same place. And we're all linked. So one of the concerns I hear about the incentives is, well, we're paying for that. And we're all paying for that. We all pay for the decisions that each of us make. And the incentives are really meant to be a bridge for districts that are moving to a new system with the goal of, you're going to see some savings out of that system that are going to translate into benefits statewide because we are connected. So Marty had, then I'll continue, Jack.
Earlier in the presentation, when you were describing the accelerated model, you said that to form an SD, all members of the existing SU had to become part of the SD. Is that locked in stone?
Correct.
So a certain, certain group of districts within SU who would comprise 900 students or 1100 students could not break off and create an SD?
Correct. Well, under the timeline envisioned by the accelerated merger, it's highly unlikely. I suppose in theory, you could have that group of districts, the ones that don't want to participate, reassigned to a different supervisory union, and then have a supervisor, I mean, that gets very complicated. The law is very clear, in order to get those incentives, all member districts within a supervisory union.
Was your question about can they do it? Or was your question about can they do it as an accelerated merger?
Accelerate, can they do it as an accelerated?
They can do it as an accelerated merger, but they could do it as a conventional merger.
Yes, yes. So that apply, that sort of box applies just for the accelerated. You could absolutely do that on any timeline that works. You just would not be eligible for the bigger incentives. So, Jackie.
Are the incentives of, in other words, the 10, 8, 6, 4, and 2, is that 30%?
No.
It's per year.
It's per year, yes.
So the, in the second year, you're at 10%, so you only go to?
It's not percent, it's cents.
Cent, 10 cents, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so it's eight cents off the tax rate that it, you know, that it would have been for the new district.
And in the new district, the thought is that you would be spending less anyway. So when you come to the second year and get the eight cents, you'd be lower anyway.
Correct.
So by the end, maybe you would have saved hopefully 20%.
So I can't get into what, I'm not going to project what the percentage of savings is. It really is going to depend on the decisions that are made by the new board, the analysis that the new board, working with their administration, does in order to see, where are the opportunities for us? I'm going to show a quick video clip in a minute because a lot of this stuff is just words on page. And I've got a quick video clip of interviewing board members of superintendents in a place that actually did this, talking about what they saw as an opportunity.
So I have a part two.
Sure.
So say, can a SU just change their name and become an SD?
No. So an SD is a single district. So you need to, you know, depending on how many districts you currently have, there's this process outlined in statute. It's the same process that's used to create union high schools. That was done in many parts of the state in the 60s. So that same process is still what's used to form a new union school district. So you have to form, you know.
In other words, if our SU currently is way over 900 students, and some people opted not to, as long as we had 900 students, we could do this.
You would be, assuming that you meet some of the other requirements in terms of your operating at the same grades, et cetera, if you have 900 students, that would be a preferred structure. Single board, single district.
So we could have, we could have 600 K through six students, and then tuition out the high school students, yes?
Yes, yes, yes. It's your ADM for the new district. Okay, so, did I, I think, yes, you, sir.
There's another fellow that's, that's longer, but I have a question.
I don't know if this is the right number, this question, but has anybody projected how much staff the agency of education, private education, not to add by 2019 to actually oversee what happens in 2019?
So that is one of the reasons that there's staggered implementation deadlines, recognizing that we can't just do all of this at once. You know, our organizations, the agency are out straight right now trying to respond to requests for information and support on Act 46. So I'll let, I'm not going to respond for Rebecca about what their plan is in terms of staffing, but it's definitely, we all need to be prepared for the work and be ready to support implementation. So I don't, I think maybe Bill, Rebecca, and Amy can speak to that as part of their presentation in a few minutes.
Under financial consequences, there's a statement here that says, supervisory unions found to be out of compliance with the Act 153 centralization provision, will see a 5% tax penalty. What are the centralization provisions?
So those are the?
And I haven't read Act 153.
I can't believe that. So I'm not going to necessarily cover all of them because I, as many times as I have read.
I'm saying for general.
Yeah, special education, so the requirement to provide special education through the supervisory union, transportation, financial management services, data management services, sorry? Oh, I don't know if I'm missing any, but those are the big ones.
Purchasing.
Purchasing, collective bargaining.
Just sort of a quick follow-up on that. We complied with most of Act 153. One particular one, transportation, we did a study and determined it would cost us more if we centralized, and we got a one-year waiver. So what does that mean in terms of, you know, actually, just, just, what that?
It basically shifts the burden to you to show that the way you're choosing to operate is not a constant factor. And there are places where that is actually true. There are also places where choosing not to centralize is actually increasing the demand for education. And those are the cases where we're subject to the process.
Is anyone getting a, you know, just to take transportation as a case, has anyone got a permanent approval for that?
Well, the reason the waivers were not there is we knew that the legislature was doing something, and we didn't want to facilitate something that might end up. So the intent was actually to make use of the process. We didn't want people moving on things that had never changed in the way. So we're hoping to make it so we do what we have to do. Try to make these.
I have time for about two more questions, and then we're going to give those to the floor, so.
My question has nothing to do with money. I want to know, from the state and from FSBA, where's the data that shows that this is going to improve student outcomes and student outcome?
So you're going to see some, some people talking about what, how that's worked in their system. There's a lot of research out there. As I said, there's not a lot of Vermont-specific research because not a lot of places in Vermont have done this. But we have a great example that is just starting to get going. They're operational July 1 of this year. And when you talk to, and I just saw a presentation put together last week by a board member to another supervisory union who wanted, who's engaged in conversations about Act 46. And from her vantage point, yeah, I would recommend any of you who are struggling with how to move forward, to reach out to board members that have done this work and have conversations with them about what they, what they're experiencing. For her, it was almost like we didn't know what we could accomplish until we really spent our time focusing on students. And so I think I'd like to, actually, that's a great transition. Ken, if you want to have a?
I just have one question. Since what are the goals of 46 things to be saving money for districts? You have to make it, you want to put a goal.
Well, that's certainly one of the goals of the allowable growth rate.
You were the commissioner, could enlighten us as to what type of strong lobbying did the CDCs have not to be included into this where there's lots and lots of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of savings? And yet the legislature looked the other way and says, you know, we basically don't care.
So there, that applies to the three, the three, yeah.
Do you know why the legislature says we don't care if they can save $200,000, $300,000, $400,000? It means nothing to us?
No, that was not the conversation around tech centers. It wasn't that they don't care about them. I think it was that they are a unique, just like an interstate district, they are a unique creation of state statute. And I'm not aware of a very powerful CDC lobby, but.
There has to be a powerful lobbying group to have them exempt. It's just like the gold standard for the health insurance that's coming up, 217. I was reading that the police requirement and longshoremen aren't covered by that gold standard. They can have $50,000 worth of health insurance.
The excise tax doesn't apply to, yeah, I don't know if they are in a Taft-Hartley.
Whatever the big lobbyists for those.
I don't have an answer to that question. So.
There is a side, I mean, I think it's just a separate issue. There are other conversations going on around tech centers. And I think it was just something that we're going to take on this year. I think you'll see that come with the new consolidation. In terms of benefits of consolidation, I think the legislature took a big testimony from districts that had really taken seriously the proposition of consolidating special education. And in places that have really rapidly consolidated special education at the SU level, what we're seeing is reduced costs in delivering services. So I think that was part of the.
Right, so we do have a growing Vermont base of information around what happens when you centralize services.
Probably doesn't pertain to this, but I think it would be nice. All the CDCs in the state were diploma-granting. Instead of having to spend only two, three, four hours and get credit and compensation. I think if they were set up like Massachusetts, where you could go one week education, one week training.
So we'll talk before the legislative session starts.
I would encourage you to talk to your legislature because I guess I could be a little on your own. I know that is a conversation that's taking place. So I think you should just talk to your local legislature.
Okay, so I'm going to show this video clip. So this is, again, Chittenden East, which is the communities of Bolton, Jericho, Huntington, Richmond, Underhill. And they've been engaged in these conversations over the course of many years. They had a vote a few years ago that was unsuccessful. They brought a plan back to the electorate and were successful last fall. And they were a supervisory union that was organized around a union high school district. So their union high school district operated rates five through 12, and they had a bunch of K-12 elementary schools and communities surrounding them. A lot of, and those communities were, you know, largely rural. Some of the schools were so small that they were sort of struggling year to year with whether they could stay open. So this is a clip from a documentary, essentially, that the Agency of Education did, talking to folks in that system of what that experience was like for them. So I thought it'd be helpful for you, really, in response to some of the questions here about what does this really mean in Vermont?
Over the last decade, what has been, our own involvement has dropped. And for some of our particularly smaller schools, volatility in the tax rate, getting into budget seasons and having to be reactive because your ed spending per boy and pupil was artificially high and not knowing what to do, and then having to really think about cutting programs that were vital to students. And so that was really the genesis of the boards and the community talking about unification. And for us, it was somewhat natural because, again, I just, I'm so proud of the Mount Mansfield Union School District that the board and the system has always talked about student opportunities, student success, but not where the students live.
Fifty years ago, the mindset was, these are all our kids. And that's continued, you know, for 50 years. These are all our kids in all this school district. And once we, we were able to get community members to wrap their heads around that, that was our biggest challenge, but that was our big, big success. Stop thinking this, of this as an adult issue. And we had to get, make sure we were thinking about this as a student issue or as our kids' issue. And that was a challenge, you know, for a lot of communities who were very vested in their schools, vested in their local control and making decisions at a, at a local level.
But I think this new unified board has more local control because they are able to look at the system in a very comprehensive way, not a very finite or man-made way. In many, many ways, they're going to have more control over the efficiencies, the outcomes of students over the long haul. There's also opportunities. There's also opportunities for parent-teacher groups, which have, you know, that is where a lot of the work in a role of control comes from. Anyway, that's the reality.
So I was a math teacher here at this high school, and then when I became principal, we were trying to figure out why our young learners were not doing well in Algebra I. So we took the ones who had failed first semester Algebra I, and I invited them for lunch with pizza. And we asked them, and we just had an informal conversation, and the superintendent was with me as well. And what they said was fascinating was, when I was in fifth grade, or when I was in third grade, or when I was in second grade, there was this something, fractions or concepts, and I didn't really understand it, but we just kept going. And that made me realize how important a unified curriculum, a scaffold both vertically and horizontally, so across schools, all third graders have a similar curriculum. And then the first grade speaks to the second grade, which speaks to the fifth grade, which speaks to the ninth grade, and it all aligns.
So the merchants are going to get the teachers, like, on the same page, their curriculum lies, and have the same resources, so they're all teaching similar ways and methods. So then when the younger students go to the middle school, they're all on the same point, and they're ready to move on. Because a lot of our elementary schools are small, and they're near each other, we can share so many more resources, and that we can have a teacher work at Underhill Independent in the morning and then go over to Underhill Central in the afternoon and teach, you know, foreign languages, and that we can really share the resources and technology and having everything really integrated into every single school, so that when we all come together at the middle school and then to the high school, we've all had similar experiences and we've all had the same resources to build from.
And Smiley, some of our other schools, we had to cut tax budgets. So when we're looking at implementing a reader and writer's workshop, a research-based program which is child-focused and really we see huge gains in writing of our children, we don't have the money to pay for the curriculum or the training for teachers from particular schools. We now, together collectively, pool our resources and are more efficient with that in terms of offering combined trainings between schools. We're able to look at things differently due to the flexibility, which didn't exist previously. And I see the work that I'm doing, the conversation is different. For instance, I would help supervise and work with some of the school boards, and we even spend hours working on mission and vision over the course of retreats and meetings. And this would be repeated in the six different school boards. And I would bet that if you took the mission statements of every single school in Vermont, they would be relatively similar. We want to serve all our children, we want them to learn. What's happened now is that conversation is in one place, and now we're really looking at the instruction. Really, what matters is the instruction in the classroom, and we know how hard a job teaching is. And in order to really help us all become the best teachers we can be and reach all of our learners, we need to focus there. When we have distractions up the ladder, we're not able to focus.
There are some cost savings that we're realizing coming up to this new district. There is going to be a lot more time, I guess, available without having to go to multiple boards and making the same budget presentations. The budget process will be a little more streamlined. Now goes up to me to do analysis of, you know, how can we do things better? How can we save money? Sort of a way of combining activities between two schools. It's going to be easier when any costs related to big capital improvements will be there and be easier to absorb. And it'll make the decisions more easier. We haven't realized it yet, but we can see what we can do in food services, and see what's actually done there. Again, with proximity of middle school and elementary schools, you know, what can happen there. Same with custodial services. We're going to see what we can do to share the staff. Some of the savings are a little bit more difficult to implement quite quickly, and contracts have to go out by a certain time of giving, and that kind of boxes you a little bit. The vote happened in November, the first meeting was December 18th or so. To really hit the downwind in the early model, big changes is going to be difficult and to be really in time to do that. It's going to be easy ones in the first year, it's going to be a better transition year. A lot more planning and studying and see what we can do and how to implement any of the changes we have. We'll see more of that move as we get to this update.
So, the, I believe the full video is, is that up on the agency's website at this point, or is it-
Because I'm trying to get that out.
Yeah, your active listening skills are very, very good.
It's not uniform to the teacher.
Yes, that's right. That's right. But I do think it's important to have an opportunity, this is a great opportunity. It's also, board members from, from this school district are happy to come and talk to you about their experience, what worked, what didn't work, what they are seeing in terms of opportunities. I think board member to board member is really a great way to say, okay, that all sounds great, what does it actually mean? And how can we make it work?
On my districts, I'm assuming that we're in-
I don't have that off the top of my head. I believe it was six districts. I don't know how many buildings they had.
Some schools had sixty or even ten.
What's the total?
I think, I'll tell you by the time I-
Yeah, well, but, yeah, but you're on, Rebecca. So, so that concludes my, you know, overview for you of Act 46. Again, we're going to give you all an opportunity to spend about forty-five minutes in small groups, sharing sort of where you're at with respect to Act 46, what resources, what questions you have, and I'll be available to sort of bounce around and answer questions. But at this point, I want to turn it over to Secretary Holcomb and her Deputy Secretary, Amy Fowler, who I'm so grateful to have here with us tonight. I think one of the first questions that I hear from board members is, when we talk about the goals of Act 46, first and foremost is equity, then quality. What does that mean? How are we going to know if we're offering equitable access to educational opportunities? What is equality? What are the education quality standards? We have a one-page summary of them tonight. So I invited them to join us to really, because I think they're embarking on some really exciting work nationally, particularly. I think it's such a, it's a positive assets-focused look at how we're doing in our schools versus some of the more punitive approaches that are being done in other states. So I think they're really to be commended for the work that you're doing. I'm excited they're here to talk to you about it and answer your questions. So I'm going to turn it over to you guys. Thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you, first of all. It has been amazing to partner with Nicole because this is really, really complicated work, and it's really important that you have as much support as you can get in the interim to do the right thing for our kids. And I really appreciate the way you started with the emphasis on the children. And ultimately, form has to follow function. You have to make any changes that you feel are necessary given where you want to go. So you have to start with where you want to go. So that's the key part. So thank you, first of all. Clearly, I don't have a future as a newscaster, so I'm going to go back to my day job, which is being here. And one of the funny things about being in this position is how much people want you to talk about finance and government, governments, and how little they actually want you to talk about educational quality. So it's an absolute pleasure to be here today and share some of the work that's going on in the agency around the quality of education and how we'll know if our schools are doing what we care about and what we want for our children. The education quality standards are actually what motivated this work and this really predated Act 46. This was happening anyway. And we've long had ambitious quality standards. And what's been interesting is we haven't really delivered on the promise and the potential of it. And if you think about Vermont, one of the things that we care about, which is so different from other states, is we, we've really put our emphasis in Vermont, not just on test scores and not just on learning in the two tested academic subjects that count for fellow accountability purposes, but everywhere I go in the state of Vermont, every single school has something really exciting to tell you about their learning and social studies in the arts, teaching their kids to be persistent, to, to solve problems in community contexts and real-life problems. So what we care about is so much more ambitious than what is easily captured with those test scores. So what the education quality standards do is try to define that. What does it look like when we're educating our children well? And what are the, some of the components or pieces that need to be in place to make that happen? And our job at the agency in, in the standards and also in statute is to try to figure out how we're going to measure that and play that back to you as the leaders of our educational system, so that you can act on that information to improve the learning of children in the schools that you're caretakers for. And that's really our, our charge. And what Amy's going to speak to you about tonight is, is her work at the agency to involve stakeholders from every county in the state in a wide variety of capacities in putting together a vision for how we're going to capture a snapshot and then more detailed information about the work of our schools and what it tells us about the, the learning of our children. It's really, actually, I'm going to let Amy do most of the talking, and I'm really pleased to be able to share. She's a lifelong educator. She was also my statistics partner all the way through graduate school.
I told that story on the way down.
And one of the things I really, really appreciated about her is that she's sort of a yes and. She's a person who really keeps me on and challenges me all the time to make sure that what we're doing is the right thing for kids. So it's been wonderful to have her come to Vermont and come to the agency and begin to really shepherd this work and put wheels on this bus. Because at the end of the day, the standards are only as good as our ability to implement them. And what Amy is, is really good at is working with a broad range of stakeholders to make sure that we actually do what we've committed to doing. And so I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thanks, Rebecca.
And we're really pleased to be able to share this with you today.
All right, so I'm going to present to you about education quality reviews with a few caveats I'd like you to keep in your pocket. The first is they don't exist yet, and they're being designed with input from the field. So what I tell you tonight is what I know as best as I can tonight. We're involving the public, teachers, principals, superintendents, business managers, students, parents, all kinds of different folks in crafting this process. So what it looks like a year from now might not be exactly what I tell you tonight. But I'm going to tell you the best that I know tonight, so that you understand where we're headed. Along the way, I'm going to go pretty quickly through this, and then we'll have questions at the end. So the education quality reviews comes out of the education quality standards. And it is the mechanism by which we, the Agency of Education, will help school systems tell the public, tell their communities, how well they're delivering on education quality standards. In this, there are certain questions that we are charged with. And so the very first question is, are they providing substantially equal experiences for students, learning outcomes, learning opportunities? This is particularly challenging because we have to set that approximately equal experience at the right level of detail that allows for local decision-making on how to do some of it. So there is, I'm trying to think of a good example that I can give you right now. So one of the things we often talk about, this example comes up at the Board of Education quite a bit, well, what if one school system has eleven field trips a year and another school system has three? They're not substantially equal. That's true. But if we're looking at what kinds of extracurricular opportunities do kids have as a bigger bucket, maybe the group that only had three field trips also has a band and the other one doesn't. Perhaps they have more sports teams and the other one has fewer. So it's really looking about the grain size of what we're saying is, are the extracurricular experiences substantially equal without being identical? Are they substantially equal? That's what we're looking at. The second question is, are schools, are school systems satisfactorily improving? The belief here is that every school system, no matter how wonderful it is today, it can be and will need to get better to serve its students moving into the future. So we're always looking, is it substantially equal and is it getting better? Okay? These are currently being piloted this year. We have sixteen school systems, press release coming out this week for which sixteen school systems volunteered to participate in the pilot. And those volunteers, what they've agreed to do is tell us everything they hate about the education quality review process and everything they love, so that as we refine the process before next year when it takes effect, it reflects what actual field members say is good practice in reviewing the school systems. So what are the overarching goals? One of the things that I think is the most important is that we really do want to understand what we define as a quality program. And because it's locally based, we have to really understand how people make the local decision. So how did you decide on eleven field trips? How did you decide on three field trips? How did you decide which sports teams you were going to have? How did those local decisions get made? And how do they impact kids? We also want to look at that full range of outcomes that we expect for our students. Rebecca is completely right. Everywhere we go, people talk to us about reading and writing and math, and the other subjects get skipped, and the other values get skipped when we talk about accountability. In Vermont, we care about more than that. The third part that I'm the most excited about is I talk to educators across Vermont all the time who are doing amazing things. They figured out some strategy for solving bus routes that gets them the best bang for their buck. Or they figured out some way to coordinate with a neighbor, another neighboring school to have a sports team where maybe they couldn't previously have one because they didn't have enough kids. But they've figured out these strategies for a wide variety of things. One of the things this will allow us to do is identify those promising practices, lift them up, so that other school systems struggling with that same topic will have a reference point of a place to go to, and they won't have to rely on the luck of a conversation. They'll actually be elevated up. Fourth, we've talked about the smallness of our schools and uniqueness. One of the things in other states where they have large school systems, they often talk about the loneliness of being a principal or the loneliness of being a superintendent. You're the only person with that job and you have no one to talk to. Well, in many of our schools, if you're a teacher of second grade, it can be pretty lonely too because you're the only teacher of second grade. So part of this, and I'll get to it in a moment, it's going to create opportunities. When we do our field reviews, they'll be paired with other neighboring geographically proximate area school systems that will create these opportunities for networking and sharing resources within a geographic region. And then the last part that both Rebecca and Nicole have alluded to is this sense of a collective responsibility for all children in Vermont. So I live in the central part of the state right now, and I just moved here from somewhere else. But when I talk about Vermont, there are kids. I haven't met your children or the kids that you serve, but I care deeply for them and I want them to have the same great quality education as the student in the furthest northeast corner of the state as well. So this is about how can we all take responsibility for all of our students? So essentially, how does it work? So you have that one pager from Nicole. This document is dense. I wasn't here when it was written. I read it just like you all. And here are the big five buckets of work. It talks a lot about academic achievement throughout the document, personalization of learning and extension of Act 77, flexible pathways, PLPs, proficiency-based graduation requirements, all of those types of things. We want our schools to be safe, supportive environments that nurture kids to learn. We want to make sure they have high-quality staff. And then we also want to be financially responsible, and that gets to that part that Nicole was speaking about, that return on the investment. So what we're going to look at is these five categories in two different ways. One way will be through an annual snapshot, which is a quantitative review of data. It's just the facts, it's just numbers. We'll talk about that in a minute. And then the second is an integrated field review, which will actually involve a visitation from a mixed group of educators. And all of these will contribute to a systemic plan of continuous improvement. So the annual snapshot. This will be collected every year. Like I said, it's only numbers. Right now, we're looking at data that can be collected by the AOE from the real work that educators do. So when your principal schedules students into a class, that data system talks to the Agency of Education. We're able to pull that data without anyone having to do extra work. When someone has taken attendance, written who came to school that day, that data will come to the agency without someone doing extra work. We're also doing collections from other bodies, like, for example, the SAT company, the College Board. We're looking at military data, we're looking at data from the Division of Labor to track what happens with our alumni. So this is data that we are not going to have new collections, we're leveraging existing collections. We also need this to be stable, something that we believe we either report to someone else, like the federal government, to get the federal dollars that flow to us, or it's something we know we care about. And this needs to be collected on an annual basis. This, what I'm going to show you now, is fake. It is completely fake. It is completely made up. It in no way is real. But this is a sample of what it could look like, but it is not real, and it is fake. So please, it is fake. All right. I'm glad it looks fake. So these are those five categories that we intend to look at. This is a make-believe scale, has no meaning, but what we think here is that if you would read this, what you would say is, this particular school system not doing so well on safe school climate, but doing pretty nice on personalization. Okay, that's, that's how you would read this. The second issue that I told you we have is this notion of equity and how equal is it across the state? This first column is looking at, to what degree is it similar or different to other supervisory unions or districts across the state? So in this case, it's not doing so well in safe schools, it's also doing much worse than other supervisory unions. We've got a- We've got a red flag, something to work on. Where this one, it's kind of average on academic achievement and about the same as the state. That's how we would read that. A second issue is not just how does this supervisory union compare to other supervisory unions, but how are students experiencing this within the supervisory union? Are some students more advantaged than others? So the smaller this is, the less variability between students who have some disadvantage and students who don't. So in this case, school climate is terrible, but it's terrible for everyone. Okay? Nobody's at a disadvantage. In this one, high-quality staffing is pretty good. It's about the same as the state, but we have wide disparity. And what that would mean is that students with more disadvantages, maybe they're an English language learner, they're on free and reduced lunch, they're being assigned to maybe the less qualified teachers or the less experienced teachers in a greater rate than the students who don't have those particular disadvantages. So inequity is high here. So even though they're good in the performance, about the same as the state, they have a high level of inequity. This gives a picture of how things are happening in this make-believe fake, not-real data. There are six schools in the supervisory union and this is the same school each time. And you would be able to drill down and see the data of that school if it was large enough. But it also lets you know whether or not the school is adding or detracting from how the school system as a whole is doing. So in this case, this particular school is really not performing well in academic achievement while everyone else is performing about the same level. Does that make sense? These are some of the ways that we are conceptualizing the fake data that isn't real. Yes.
Are you gonna publish when it's real, will you publish?
Yes.
Then you have the same problem, people move to the better towns, to better schools. It's the same problem, but they're all fake. Nevermind. It's fake.
All right. So to help you, this is what it looks like when you land on the page. You would click on the category you were interested in. Academic achievement would move you to the category page, which would give you a similar display. In this case, this is the level at which accountability will rest. School systems will then get additional data at the detail level and then further at the fine detail level. And all of this will be accessible to your principals, your superintendents, and your teachers for the students to whom they have direct responsibility. Okay? If the student numbers are too low to protect the privacy of students, then that data will be suppressed in the same way that it's suppressed now, but school personnel will be able to see it. All right. That's the hard side, the numbers, the snapshot. That's collected every year. It's reviewed by the agency and we'll use that for a state of the state in Vermont. Now, this data, the integrated field review, is the opposite side of that. This is when the agency will come with other educators from supervisory unions and students to a school system, will review any local data that you've collected that tells a different story or the same story as what was shown in the quantitative review. The format will vary because each school system will pick the things they think showcase their work the best. It will focus on what is observed or heard or seen or touched when we're in that visit. It's flexible. People will change their mind over time, what they want to show us. And it's only gonna happen every three years. I think the confusing part about this is how does the assignment work? So I'm gonna start with an example and then we're gonna marvel at my wonderful Jessica's animation. This particular SU or school district, number four, it has seven schools. It will contribute 14 staff members. Most of those will be at the superintendent's discretion. And it will also contribute seven students. This supervisory union only has six. They'll dedicate 12 staff members to the process and six students. That's the host team. They host a visit to their school system. But each of these people also participates in a visiting team. So supervisory union number three will be visited by its six students. They're gonna help us know how typical what we see is of their daily lived experiences, eighth grade and up. And they'll also be visited by 12 educators from three other supervisory unions. All of these teams will have the same five AOE staff members filling out the team. So when we come visit the six schools at supervisory union number three, there will be a total of 23 individuals reviewing those six schools to give the report. All right, I saw some nods, so I think I can go. So what are we gonna look at? These are some examples. I'm just gonna choose one. So personalized learning is one of the topics that's in the education quality standards. So we would come and we would say, hey, what we'd like to do is sit down and talk with some kids about their personalized learning plan. We're gonna choose five or six students. They'll bring their personalized learning plan with them and sitting with the reviewers walk through, how was this learning plan created? Who did you partner with? Did your parents have a role? Did you not? What kinds of things did you do? Tell me a little bit about how it impacted your learning and have a conversation with the student with the document in the hand. That might be one thing we would do. We might also talk to students about, how did you get enrolled in a flexible pathway? You're working with CTE, how did that come about? Tell me how, you know, what's happening in your classes? Or we might go observe them. We might also look for evidence of student choice or voice in their learning process. The list of activities that has been generated by the field for what we could look at has over 380 different activities and questions that could be asked. We won't be asking all of them. We'll be sampling. We don't want to be there for a week. We don't want to disrupt the learning. So the next question people ask is, so how do these things go together? In the year that you have both an annual snapshot and an integrated field review, both pieces count the same amount, 50/50. The numbers tell us part of the story. The visit tells us more of the story. Those items will go together and we'll ask the questions. Is this school system substantially equal to what we see in other school systems? And are they making satisfactory progress towards attaining EQS? If the answer to those questions, a yes to question one and a no for question one or a yes for two, not substantially equal but making satisfactory progress, then the AOE has no action required of it other than to provide support at the school's request, the school system's request, in areas of interest. So again, substantially equal, no big deal. Not substantially equal but making progress, okay. If however, the answer is a no to both questions, it's not substantially equal and not making progress, the AOE is required to act on the second round of visitation by statute. And that statute existed long before Act 46. It existed long before education quality standards came in. It's just now heightened in the land of accountability. What's really exciting about this is the federal government is currently undergoing conversations around reauthorization of No Child Left Behind. And if in fact, that bill goes through as it's being discussed, this new plan could take the place of much of that work. So we're optimistic. In terms of what kinds of required AOE actions exist, there's continued technical assistance, adjusting boundaries or responsibilities of superintendents, assuming administrative control of areas where there are deficiencies or closing schools and requiring tuition if that is what is deemed to be in the best interest of kids. And so our implementation plan, we have started the integrated field review pilot. Our first training is actually September 23rd, so we're pretty excited to dive in. I fully believe the first version that we do with school systems will not really look like what the last version is. I'm so excited that people have said, Amy, I'm happy to tell you what I don't like about it, so you can make it better. The annual snapshots are being created and will be deployed next year in 2016. And then the EQR process as a whole will be deployed for the first time next year with supervisory unions. The last thing that I didn't tell you that I should tell you, this year, because it's the first year that we're doing it, none of the reports will be made publicly available because they're all practice. We don't know that they're valid yet and that's the reason that we're doing the pilot. So that was my piece. And I can take questions, Nicole. You'll tell me when to stop.
Well, we have a good amount of time.
Okay.
So if you have questions, you have a lot of time.
Yes.
So as I understand it, all schools will go through the AOE, but some schools will invite other people to come in, because you couldn't possibly do all the schools in Vermont the first year.
No.
On visitations. So how, would that be a rotational thing?
Yes. Every three years and we'll visit supervisory unions to see the schools in a supervisory union slash supervisory district at a single time.
So for instance, if it's on a three-year basis, how many schools you envision visiting the first year?
20 supervisory unions.
Are districts gonna have to add employees to provide all the state?
No, they should not need to add a single employee because it's data that they're already collecting in the course of their work. Yes.
Just, just, you know, talk, the example of a SU or SD with six schools and you've got six students and 12 teachers. Are, you know, when you're, when you're looking at them, are you going to the school level? Are you doing it at the SU level? If you've got, if you've got six schools and six students, presumably one for each school, then is it one student in the review with, you know, with all, with all 23 people, all 22 people or what? You know, how, I just don't understand how it, how it works down to the individual school level.
Great. So that is actually one of the places where it's really a struggle. So much of the work that is in EQS is at the supervisory union level, that our report will be at the supervisory union level for the depth of implementation across the supervisory union with visitations to each of the schools. But we're actually going to be working at the supervisory union level.
Except if you're fake, fake, fake thing, you, you have individual schools where you were rating individual schools.
Yep. So in the fake, 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 here, this actually is letting you know how these schools are contributing to the overall supervisory union score.
So you, you are visiting each individual school within the SU?
This one is the hard data that is collected, not the visiting data.
Oh, right, right, right.
But we do, as part of our visit, we will visit every school, but every person won't visit every school. So two or three people will go to school A and two or three will go to school B and then they'll switch in the afternoon, compare their results. All right. Yes, sir.
So it is fake, it's a stylized example. At what point do you stop? At what point is, if you have all five circles of academic achievement, all schools, should we have five circles?
That, that's a really great question. So there's two things that we're looking at right now in our data snapshot. And quite frankly, this is one of the I-don't-knows. If in fact, we're striving for, okay, so I'm gonna say this, I'm gonna make sure I say this the right way. So when we're talking about equity of opportunity and we're talking about quality, one of the things we want to be careful of is we don't want to constrain someone who's doing something in a really excellent way so that there can be equity. Right? So...
That's, that's my fear.
Right. So we don't want to do that. So I would actually say to you, the goal here, and this will be the PR part that we have to work on, this school system right here has achieved an average level of performance and it is, and it is working at about the same level as everyone else. However, it has fairly high inequity within its school system and that might be where it focuses. This school system right here has achieved a high level of personalization. They're doing better than the rest of the SUs in the state and they have a low level of inequity. I would say this would not be an area of focus. It is not my belief that anyone is gonna be all green circles.
You stand certain way, the projector's giving black eyes.
Oh, that's true. I hadn't thought about that.
One, one, one follow-up question.
Yeah.
At a recent board meeting, we had a math teacher stand up and almost bragged that we were seeing this state because we were 33% efficient and the state was 32%. So is that, that's the kind of stuff we wanna have here? We're, if everybody's 32, that's great, you know, which is not great.
So you're asking...
We're gonna accept lower numbers because we're on average.
Right. So you're gonna, you're asking two questions.
We're gonna accept mediocrity because it's equal.
So I think there's two, there are multiple questions in what you're asking. So one is, how do we set the benchmark for what color coding will be? That's a reasonable question. The second is, would we expect something to be 100%? So I will give an example. One of the things we are working right now is to create a measure of what percent of our students are engaged in college or career as alumni in the first year out of, out of graduation. That's our question. I will tell you, it will never be 100% because there's always gonna be some student who's moved out of state that we can't get the data for. Or they're working someplace, maybe they're in a career tech center program that doesn't share their data with us. Or they attended one of the few colleges that doesn't supply the data. They changed their name and it no longer matches, so we can't find them, but they actually are in college. So we're not going to see that number be 100% even if the school system was 100%. Does that make sense, everybody? So one of the things we have to talk about is how we educate one another in the public as to what our goal is for that number. And each school system, and this is the beauty of local control, is gonna decide where do they want to focus. Now, if it's me and I, this was my school system, this is where I'm focusing because it looks like it's just bad across the board and I don't care that everyone is equally unhappy. This is not good. All my schools are in the reds. We gotta focus on school and safe climate. This, I might look and say, I gotta talk to these two schools about how they're staffing. But otherwise, I cannot pay too much attention to this and I can let it go. And each school system is gonna have the opportunity to choose, where do we get better? But you won't get better at everything and you're gonna have to respond to your voters and what they care about. And some of your voters are gonna be okay with some of these things being in the red and other voters won't. And that'll be part of the work that we do. I think I have a couple more questions. Yes, ma'am.
So in examining the data collected within the SU or SD, the way that that data is collected, I wanna make sure I understand what to expect with it. Is it across the schools in the system or is it broken down across student groups in the system?
So our, great question. Our student groups are so small that in all likelihood, what we'll be looking at is our priority student groups, students who enjoy one or more characteristic commonly associated with being underserved as a big mega group. So students who are English language learners, students who are on free and reduced lunch, maybe migrant, maybe homeless, maybe foster, all those kids as one big group. How differently do they experience school than students who have none of those historical disadvantages? And so this is looking at kid-level data. This is looking at school-level data. They're all interrelated. All right? So this is, how do I compare to other supervisory unions or districts? This is how do different types of kids experience my school system? And this is how are different schools experiencing this in my system?
Thank you.
Okay? And again, stylized example, we're not committed to this. It's a stylized example. This is what currently exists as a, how would we demonstrate equity? This is how am I achieving on the quality? This is how am I getting at the equity? We're trying to figure out how to get both of those things in a simple way that doesn't take 10 years to explain to someone.
I'm trying to, I'm still trying to figure out the relationship of the dots, the colored dots, to, to the state average.
Yep.
And I'm still not understanding if in fact, there's a benchmark.
Yep.
So you, I, I understand that if I look at safe school climate, that there's one red dot and that means that that's, that district is not doing as well as the state. And maybe the state average is two and a half, you know, and whatever. But I, I still don't know if two and a half, what two and a half means.
Yep. And quite frankly, I don't know yet either. Here's the dilemma for us. Some of these things are newer than others and so we don't know what the benchmark should be. So for example, in personalized learning, we have not yet had a graduating class where every student should have been offered an opportunity to a flexible path to graduation. So if I give you a statistic right now and say, this is what you need to have in order to get X number of dots or whatever color, what that will be five years from now will be different, right? Because we're growing into that. It's a relatively new idea. But this notion of high-quality staffing, those metrics are virtually the same as they were under school quality standards. So what that bar should be is much higher because we've been working on it for longer. because we've been working on it for a long time. So one of the things that we're doing is we're going back and looking at historical data to see what should those benchmarks be that drive this? And understand that it is very possible, under personalized learning, that in the beginning, and this isn't how I drew this, I'm gonna try not to have dots. I would expect a lot of the personalized learning to actually look like this when we start because we haven't done it for very long. But then I would also expect to see, it's a lot like other SUs when we start because we're all new at it and we're not doing it yet. And no one should freak out about that. Right? But if you have high-quality staffing and this showed up as a red because you had tons of unqualified teachers and principals were leaving every six months and your superintendent changed every two weeks or something, you know, horrible, that's not typical. And you would have one red and then it would say, "This is a lot worse than other SUs." So part of, you know, the ambiguity I think you're experiencing is, we're figuring it out and we're doing that by looking at historical data.
At some point, when this kind of data becomes available, are we gonna be able to answer the question as to what does the graph mean in terms of comparative data? So if somebody, if I was a principal or a teacher, somebody said to me, "What does that academic achievement graph mean?" You know? Can I say, can I say with some degree of certainty that it means X? That it means that we are, we are the equivalent of 50, about 50% of the other SUs, somewhere around there?
Yes. Technically. So you will be able to say, you'll be able to say here, "How well is my achievement meeting the quality standards?" The benchmark is what we need to set for you and we need to tell you exactly what each of those benchmark levels are. You would be able to toggle over these to get some clear English directions. This will tell you how you're doing compared to other SUs. And it would have a key that says, "If you see an equivalent or greater than sign, you're doing fine. Don't worry about this. If you see a less than sign, pay attention." Right? So what we'll do is we'll color code or help you know where are your alert areas. But the second piece, and this is what I'm working on right now when I'm not meeting with you, is what is the plain language question that goes in this box? So this says state assessments right now because it's how I'm thinking of what it means. That's not what's gonna make sense to the public. What the public wants to know is something like, "What was the amount of growth our students made on state-administered assessments in science, reading, and math?" That's a plain language sentence that I can give that the general public will really be able to follow. How did our students do? What percentage of our students met the college-ready standard on any of the college entrance exams? That's a plain language sentence. So what I'm doing right now is writing up that plain language sentence. This is the level of accountability. The other levels are to help you make the decisions you need to do about where to dedicate resources and where to structure improvement. Yeah.
What extent are the independent schools gonna be all accountable to the school policy?
That is a great question. Rebecca? We actually just had a discussion about this and I'm like, I remember that Rebecca answered this very well in the meeting. Did you hear the question? Independent schools?
We don't hold them accountable right now because they're independent and they don't, you don't have access to the data from those schools. So we really can't tell them how your students don't assist them throughout the others. There is only one provision that allows for that and that's the independent schools that are approved as public schools. And it really isn't an independent school in state law that meets that criteria.
But any school that seeks to utilize, in legislation, an independent school can say, "I would like to engage in this process to have a full review." And they're available to participate provided they'll do the full review. They don't get to pick and choose which parts.
So what we will be able to, there is, I mean, because it is a, right? How do you evaluate the quality of your investment? How do you evaluate the equity of your investment? There are a couple things that we can track. You can link it back to elementary districts. It's not a good proxy, but you could tell you what the college attainment data is, for example, for kids coming out of your elementary district. And you'll have to fill in the lines of what happened in the years. But there are things like that that we're gonna try to build into this, this tool.
One more? One more question? All right, I wanna make sure I didn't ignore the right side because, you know, I'm right-handed and that can happen. All right, yes, ma'am?
Well, mine's a two-part. Would any of this be added work for the teachers presently?
My hope would be no, however. I don't know any teachers who, when they're being visited, don't feel added pressure and added work. So my hope would be no. What we are recommending to folks is we do not wanna see the creation of new materials for us coming to visit. You should only be sharing with us things that exist as part of your regular work. So for example, most of our schools are handing out some kind of student handbook around discipline and policies and how they handle those sorts of things. Give us that. Don't create one because we're coming. Right? So it should be an authentic piece of their work. When we visit their classrooms, hopefully they're teaching the same lesson that they would teach any other day that we weren't gonna be there. Having said that, it's a stress to have people observe your work. So my hope is no. The biggest piece for me is that this would require a participant in the program to be out of their buildings or out of their classroom for three days, two days for training and one day for the site visit. We secured funding to make sure that that burden is not felt by school systems in the first three years. After that, we'll have evaluation data to say whether or not this is a useful enterprise. And then we'll look for a commitment from the legislature moving forward. But I think the opportunity to partner with their neighbors and to have the majority of the panel evaluating the school systems be teachers, principals, school-based people, and then students from their own school is a pretty powerful way to go.
Yeah, my second question was on the funding and who does that. But I think you also clarified another point. One, a teacher who goes to visit a school, we're only going to visit a school, not all six schools.
Sorry, let me say that differently. Anyone who goes to visit a school system will visit a school system and they'll probably visit one school in the morning